Good afternoon. The October 6, 2020 Rule Development Workshop for School Board Policy 8420.02, Emergency Policy Requiring Face Covering is now in session. This policy was adopted by the school board on August 11, 2020 as an emergency board policy due to the current COVID-19 pandemic. The emergency policy is being revised so the policy can remain in effect after its initial 90 days have expired and be in compliance with applicable Florida law. Pam, roll call please.
Mrs. Belford.
Present.
Ms. McDougall.
Present.
Mr. Susan.
Present.
Mrs. Deskovich.
Present.
And Mrs. Campbell.
Present. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the board had a work session on September 10, 2020. At the September 22, 2020 Rule Development Workshop, the board made an additional change which necessitated an additional rule development workshop which we are having today. The public has the opportunity to make public comments on the revisions. Before any comments, I request that Robin Novelli, Chief Operating Officer, provide us the executive summary.
This policy was adopted by the school board on August 11th as an emergency board policy due to the current coronavirus pandemic and that the superintendent found that there is an imminent danger and need to protect public health, safety, and/or welfare posed by COVID-19. The emergency policy as adopted governs the conduct of staff, students, visitors, and vendors in district facilities. The emergency policy became effective on August 11th and will remain in effect for 90 days unless extended pursuant to Florida statutes. This policy is being revised so that the policy can remain in effect after its initial 90 days have been expired and to be in compliance with applicable Florida law. Last time that we met, there was some discussion referenced to paragraph G, and probably the best way to look for that is on the redlined edition. As we go to paragraph G, and we can see what is and is not included there at this point, given the board's directions from our last meeting. Paragraph G now states, "Faculty and students are allowed to use a face shield in lieu of a mask when the instruction requires the ability to see the face of the student and/or the teacher, or with an applicable exemption." Ms. Belford?
Thank you, Mr. Novelli. Is there anyone present here today who would like to address the revisions to School Board Policy 8420.02, Emergency Policy Requiring Face Coverings? If you would make your way, if you guys can just take turns, make your way to the microphone here in the center. You'll have up to three minutes to speak. If you'll just make sure that you state your name first and last before speaking so that they can get it for the record.
Hello, my name is Jordan Johnson, and I live in Titusville. Oh, sorry, thank you. Okay, try that again. My name is Jordan Johnson. I live in Titusville. My major concerns with the revision is that there is now not an end date. It's very open-ended, what I had read in that document. Specifically, there is no clear metric given yet. I'd like to know what's going to happen, when will this end? If not 90 days, now we're extending it. Beyond that, now we've got some data, right, with the schools being open and low transmission. Of course, the kids are having to wear masks. I believe that specifically what you were just talking about was that they're now going to need an exemption to just wear a shield. Is that correct? They're not allowed to just wear a shield on their own accord. So for the younger students, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, like, this is a long amount of time to ask these children to be wearing a mask. The shield has been a great alternative. We're not seeing any major outbreaks in our schools. We've got some small school closures, but percentage-wise, the numbers are still very low. And so I would just ask that there would be a firm ending date or a firm metric to end the date. And I would also question the board on what is the applicable Florida law? There is no Florida mandate, mask mandate. There is, I could find nothing on the Florida Department of Education requiring that students wear masks to return to school. I could not find anything on the governor's Phase III changes that require masks at school. So I just feel like we're maybe a little bit overstepping, maybe a little bit at the mercy of the teachers' union, when the data on children and the transmission, and now that the schools are open, we're doing well, why are we even extending this? These are the questions that I would like to see addressed in this workshop, is why the extension when we're doing well, and what is the applicable Florida law that you're using to continue to extend this, when I couldn't find one? So, thank you.
Thank you, Jordan.
Hi, my name is Christina Baker. I have two children, first and fourth grade in the Brevard Public Schools, and I just kind of found some information I wanted to share. Face masks are acting as an extra transmission route, especially with children. People touch their faces 15 to 23 times per hour on average. Face irritants such as masks mean that people touch their faces, eyes, nose, and mouth even more regularly, contaminating their hands continuously. This further spreads the risk of contaminated surfaces. With children, we can all say that this is exasperated. I can also say that, as a mom, I have had a hard time keeping up with cleaning masks every day. I try, but some days it gets away from me. I'm sure there are plenty of children who have been going to school with the same old dirty mask this school year thus far. Continue to wash hands, use hand sanitizer, and temperature checks, but let's stop the torture of mask wearing that cannot and will not work with children.
Thank you, Christine.
Good afternoon, Board members and Superintendent Mullins. My name is Shelley Russell. I live in Titusville, Florida, and I have a freshman at Titusville High School. I also have five younger children at Park Avenue Christian Academy. I have served in student ministry at various churches for the past 20 years, and my husband and I currently pastor the Grove Church. I am here today to make my voice be heard regarding the extension of the mask requirement. I am respectfully asking that other repercussions of requiring the mask as dress code be considered, including the social and emotional repercussions. I understand that we are in unprecedented times and that this virus is still relatively new to our society. However, in an article posted by the Florida Today yesterday, the newest data shows the following findings. Of the 601,942 Brevard County residents, since April, there have been a total of 308 deaths in Brevard County attributed to coronavirus. Of these deaths, 187 were of persons living in long-term care facilities. That is .0005% of the population of Brevard. That is 1/10 of 1/2 of 8%. Please consider the facts with me, and may I remind us that what the CDC has said from the beginning, that those most at risk are the elderly and those who are immune-compromised. While I understand that you, as school board members, are exercising out of an abundance of caution to reduce the spread of this virus, I would also implore you and like to remind you of the following. E-learning has been made available to those students who are immune-compromised, or who may live with elderly parents or grandparents. Our students that are in school, in person, brick and mortar, have chosen to come back because they desire normalcy. They are being made to wear a mask six to eight hours a day with little to no breaks. This is neither safe, as we were created to breathe oxygen, not carbon dioxide, nor is it conducive to a healthy learning environment. It is difficult to hear each other or understand one another wearing masks. It is difficult to make friends. Our students want to connect socially and emotionally as this is a huge part of going to brick-and-mortar school. Please consider the inherent long-term risks and repercussions socially and emotionally of continuing to require the mask. I am begging you, please do not extend the mask requirement.
Thank you, Shelley. Mr. Gibbs, would you like to speak to the process, because I think there's some confusion as to both what this policy moving through the process is doing, as well as the state statute that was referenced?
Sure. The statute, the policies going through, because under Florida statutes, we can implement an emergency rule only for 90 days. It's not necessarily that it's needed for this. We cannot re-implement, so if we were to get rid of it and a flare-up occurred, it would take a 90-day window, which is a rule-making window, in order for the board to put a policy in place. When you read the amended emergency policy on face masks, it is not just for this COVID situation. It is, to put it in the school board's policies, so that if something else were to happen in the future, it can be initiated by the superintendent and then approved by the board at a later time, requiring face masks, just like at chickenpox. If DOH says, hey, we have a chickenpox outbreak at one of our schools, they can direct the school district to shut down or restrict kids going to school who have not been vaccinated for chickenpox. This is similar to that. If they say, if we have another outbreak of a different flu or whatever that's threatening lives, the superintendent will be able to say, hey, we need to implement the mask policy to try and restrict the transmission of the flu virus and put this in place, and it would come to the next board meeting under this policy. That's all this is for. It's up to the board to decide when the mask mandate will end, just like it was the board's decision to implement a mask requirement.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. And there was reference, I believe it was in Mr. Novelli's summary referencing applicable Florida statute.
Yeah, 120.
Can you, I think there's, I think there's the perception that perhaps that statute or any statute.
Yeah, chapter 120 is rulemaking procedures. So I think it's 120.54 is the reference, and yes, sub four, that governs rulemaking process for government entities. So that lays out the fact that we have, it takes 90 days basically to get a rulemaking done. You have a 28-day advertisement requirement and a 14-day advertisement requirement.
Any other board members wish to...
Address them?
Address them, or address Mr., you know, ask Mr. Gibbs for clarification, or...
I just wanted to address the, I think it was the first lady that spoke. She mentioned no clear metric to end this. I keep getting a lot of emails about when is this going to end, and I keep responding with the only answer that I've had so far, which is the Health Department saying 60 to 70%, one times 60, one times 70% are, have received the vaccine, because that's the best answer I have, because I have not heard from you all yet when you want to end the word required or end this. And so I didn't know if you wanted to discuss and maybe give them an answer, or if you guys even know.
So it was my understanding, based on our conversation of our inability to get our health professionals to identify specific metrics that we had agreed, and Ms. Campbell has been tracking for us, multiple different metrics, and that if there was a 14-day trend significantly different, then that would trigger us to come back together for a conversation. But I don't believe, and Ms. Campbell, please feel free to speak, I don't, I think we are currently on an upward 14-day trend pretty significantly.
Depends on what you're looking at. I, we, our case numbers are, unlike some of the counties around the state who were much higher than we were when we were making some of these decisions at the end of July, especially the beginning of August, they have, you can see definitely, definite curves down. For Brevard, who was already low, we're just kind of bouncing around around the same numbers. Some days we'll say, oh, there's a huge spike in cases, and the next day there'll be nine. So it really has to do, that's why the 14-day average is important, because it depends on when the data gets dumped, you know, from the labs. Our case percentage, again, kind of bounces around the same numbers. At certain points, it looks like it was trending up, but then we weren't having so many people tested. I will say this, consistent with what we're seeing across the state and the nation, our death rate has absolutely gone down, even if everything else hasn't. So whatever that might mean for us medically, I'm not a medical professional. I've read lots of articles, but I'm not going to dare to say that. But that's one metric that I haven't necessarily been tracking, but I can certainly continue to, I'll go back and look at the old Florida Day articles and see if I can pull those daily numbers, because once, once you get past a certain day, you can't, the Health Department's, it's only the day before. So I do have a comment to make when we get done, not necessarily addressing the public commenters today.
Thank you. I was under the impression when we had that meeting that we were waiting for, not waiting for, but looking for a 14-day upward trend, because we were concerned about when to open or close schools, or have to reclose schools.
Yeah, we didn't really talk about it the other direction.
Right. We didn't discuss when we can start rolling back some of these things, including, and now is any time as good as any, when we can allow maybe even just specific volunteers back in the school to help with some of our, because our non-Titel One schools, they don't have the help that our Title One schools have. They have less employees. They have quality volunteers, even if it's just two or five, that really do almost jobs in the district, and we're not allowing them in. And it's, it's a hard, you know, it's, it makes it harder on our employees that we're not allowing some of these in. So, and the playground equipment, like, what's the standard when we're going to allow some of this stuff to open back up?
I'd agree. And just to address something that you guys were asking, because we didn't establish a definite metric, when we talked about metrics a month or so ago, it was, are we going to open? Are we going to dare to disobey the governor or the Department of Education's order? And we just didn't have those numbers, honestly, my personal opinion. But we did bring a group of health experts in from all different, not just the Department of Health, but from Har- not Harris, that's an engineering firm, Health First, Parrish, that's what I was thinking, Parrish, and Stewart, our three major medical systems, as well as a few others. And one thing that was consistent, if you go back and watch that workshop, I think I can say this freely, one thing was very consistent with them is they, when we were asking, when can we stop this, when can we stop this, because we did bring that up, they were all saying, we need to get started. We need to be in school for a while, and we need to see how things are going. And it seemed to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, my memory, that if they had to prioritize things that we would start to release, playgrounds maybe first, volunteers back in the building, I would say second, and then masks, all of them were pretty consistent, that that needed to be, that's not one of the first things that they would recommend us, you know, releasing those restrictions. So that's aside from what we're doing with this policy change today, but specifically just masks in general. But I think, as Ms. Deskovich said, that's something we need to look at, is depending on how things, how things trend.
Mr. Susan, did you have a comment?
Sure. So, I just wanted to say that I'm really, I mean, I can't, you're 100% right in the fact that we never put together a metrics to come off of everything, right? Like, that makes total sense. It's not something that we really divested too much information into, because we were so worried about what was coming. And I, and I can't tell you how happy I am that we're in a place where you can start to the discussions of, hey, we're not all dying, where the school district hasn't, you know, we haven't been massively impacted, and we're at a point now where we can start discussing these kind of things, as we know that the vaccines are getting closer, as we know that those things are possible, right? So I think that, I am happy that we were able to even begin that discussion, and I thank Ms. Deskovich for pointing out the fact that we did spend a lot of time, and there was a big end game that we didn't have. So my, where I fall with this, to be completely honest, is workforce and economics when it comes to this. We, right now, our bus drivers, substitutes, nurses, and a lot of our, a lot of our workers are in the age of, you know, very high-risk class. We also have almost 15 to 20% of our students that are either directly taken care of by grandparents raising grandchildren, or they are in the care of a grandparent during the week. With those cases, I am extremely concerned that due to the transmission, that although my children, which my nine-year-old, she goes to school every day at Suntree Elementary, she attends in person, and my other daughter, she does e-learning because she works at a vet clinic which requires her not to go into school, she still tests and everything else. I understand that if they were ever to contract it, that the amount or level of risk is very, very low, right? In my case, I have a five-day-old newborn, which is of extreme concern for me in the event that something happens. And I also have our grandmother that comes every two days a week to watch the children. So there's just some of my risk classes there. So I think where I So I think where I fall on the, are you deciding to mandate masks today and are we going to move forward? I feel strongly about it, not because of the risk with the children. You guys are 100% right. It's the aftereffect of what it is to the workforce. Right now, we have an extremely low amount of bus drivers, to the point where we have middle school track. We can't even run the kids to middle school track because there's not enough bus drivers inside of our system to take care of the bus routes that we have extra past what we have. Substitutes are a rare commodity right now because a lot of them that were in the risk class never came. You go through each one of the employee groups and we're so thin right now that in the event that we impacted that in a negative way, whether that's the trust factor of not having the masks, but also the factor of just moving forward with a possible outbreak, I think would, would decimate our district into an economic crisis as far as workforce goes. And then the other end is, is that there's a lot of our, our students whose parents are still a part of our system because of the way that we have it set up currently. I know that if we had moved towards a mask, no mask mandate and allowed the kids to go, that we would see a, an abundance of individuals moving to e-learning. And I think that that's really, really, it hurts them economically because a lot of stay-at-home moms and a lot of people that are in the workforce that need to go to work are negatively impacted. I get emails every day about when a kid is sent home to be quarantined, how bad it is for a family member because they have to find the place to stay. So when you ask me, I agree with you on the metrics. We definitely need to figure something out on the back end. But to be honest, I find myself focusing on workforce and economics when it comes to the decision. And I find you're 100% right on the risk level of our students. But I think that the risk level of our elderly and other organizations are, that's where I fall. So I could be honest with you guys. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. No worries. Oops, I turned off my mic. Ms. McTagle, you want to?
Just a few words. So I, when you read the different medical reports, and there's 20 million of them out there, about the low risk for, for children for getting the virus. But the newest results are that there was, I think it was either 300,000 or 600,000 at the last one, that they're vectors. So I agree with Mr. Susan in that we have an elderly population in our school system. I shouldn't say elderly, I'll get calls on that, an older population in our school system, and they are concerned. And I agree with them because the child, the child may not get it, but they could be a carrier without even knowing. And that is, that is what's so unknown about this virus. It is something that's new. There's so many different medical opinions out there. But consistently, I, what people are saying is that masks will help stop the spread. And that's where I am on this.
Can I, can I just follow up and say that I think we do need to develop that metric? So that when there's not an open-ended, and I would entertain us putting something like that together.
I didn't hear you.
I'm sorry. I do believe that we need to put together some kind of a metric on the back end, whatever that is. And I think that we need to move on that so that we're not continuing an open-ended mask mandate forever. That's all. Whatever that is, I'm in support.
Excuse me. So I'm understanding that you, I'm not, my concern is this. I think if anything, we need to pull together our health expert team or poll them.
Sure.
I'm not comfortable suggesting randomly this is the metric where.
Right.
I mean, I just think that's outside of our area of expertise, but.
No, I agree. I'm not saying that we make that decision now. I'm saying that we need to start moving forward towards something eventually because we are going to come off the masks hopefully one day. And we want to make that. And I agree with you 100% in that we, we shouldn't be the ones that make that decision because medically, we don't know. So I would, I would definitely defer to that committee. That's all.
Anyone else, anyone else wish to push to land?
So.
Sorry. I'll be happy to speak with you after if you want though.
So I, I would like to just walk us back through where we started this journey in July. And I will say one thing, it's actually interesting because I didn't want nobody to address the, the comment that we're just following the teachers' union. I'll say it's very interesting that while we're sitting here talking, and I'm sorry for seeing my, my emails up while I'm looking, I have two different emails that have come in since we've start this workshop, started this workshop. One is let our kids breathe freely. And then the second one is continue mandatory masks in school. And I will tell you, okay, this is typical of this, what we've been getting. So it's, it's this, and these are, this is one is a doctor and another one is a parent. It's, it is our community. It is, and if you, everything's divided. And I, you know, people say follow the science. Scientists don't even agree. You can read one report. I've been sent multiple reports, this, 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 and then I've seen multiple reports. You do see this article, scientific reports that say the, almost the opposite. But I just want to walk us back through, of course, that's what the board has been, we've been eating, sleeping, breathing, you know, COVID, not literally, but you know, information. But I will say, you know, when we started out this in July, the staff recommendation to us as a board was strongly encourage. As we move forward in that meeting, the majority of the board decided that language was not strong enough. And so it was changed to expected. And the majority of the board decided that language is not strong enough. And so we went back and forth on expected versus required or mandated. We chose the word required, but it means same, same thing. That in my opinion would mean we would have had the same result, but now we have to have consequences. In addition to not only having to have consequences, then we had to have a policy because we were having a mandate or requirement. So we had to have the emergency policy. There was one vote in there where I may have seemed to flip-flop. It was not actually a flip-flop. It was because if we're going to have to have a policy, because the majority of the board decided we needed to change it from expect to require, we're going to have to have a policy. I appreciated in the policy that was written, the emergency 90-day policy, that we had lots of exceptions, time for kids to have a mask break, that they were able to take it off if they were farther than, than six feet apart. And employees as well, not just students. That we allowed face shields. That was part of it. It was part of the, and it was so, it was understood by our staff that we were going to allow that, so much so that staff purchased face shields for every elementary school student that we had. And they, they distributed them. I know because I have a sixth grader and he got one. And was able to use it interchangeably with his mask depending on where he was. And then we had, because 90-day policies only last for 90 days and we've had to have our work session. And in that work session, I believe our board chair questioned the face shields, but couldn't get enough momentum to make a change. And so we moved on. And then the last workshop we had, we had someone in public comment ask about face shields. And all of a sudden, oh my gosh, we're allowing face shields, which we have been allowing the whole entire time. We have assistant principals who stand in the car loop and greet their students with their face shield on. But now, even though our trends have not continued to go down like they did during the months of July and August, they're, they're not going in a drastic deadly direction, definitely not in the direction that many forecasted would, that we would have thousands of people who came down with COVID and people already dying at this point. So without that kind of data, we are now taking the policy and making it more restrictive by limiting the face shield use. And I know my, what I'm saying today may not make any difference in the world, but I just have to say, we are making it more restrictive without data, without data that shows that we're having spread among students who are wearing face shields more than we are having spread among students who are wearing masks. It is frustrating because of the compromise that I felt like we made, not a compromise on people's health, but a compromise in words. And that now we're just continuing to restrict, 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 tighten up. And it is, it is very frustrating to me. I do, I have not changed my opinion that I expect our staff, expect our students to wear a mask. I'm very appreciative when I go into a school and I hear a principal say, even our little ones, they're wearing their masks. They're doing a great job, you know. But I, and I'll tell you, our staff, they're doing a good job and they're going above and beyond. I go to, I'm, I'm driving through my car loop, my elementary car loop, and I see teachers out in the car loop in the Florida heat, wearing a mask when they're far away from people. And I want to roll my window down and say, you know, you don't have to wear one right now because you're in the heat. No one's standing outside, standing next to you and you're outside. But they're wearing them. And they probably are doing that on, you know, because their principals encouraged them to. And I'm not going to fault them, but I'm saying that's what's happening. I'm getting emails, and I'm sure you are too, from parents who are saying, my kid is having to wear his mask out on the playground while he's running around. So I can't say that our district's not taking it seriously because to me, some of those are more than what this board has said. So again, it's frustrating to me that we're tightening, tightening without clear data that's saying that this change, this one change, that we are getting rid of face shields if it's not instructionally necessary. To me, if you're teaching elementary school especially, all day long. You know, then put your mask on when you walk into the copy room, but when you're instructing students, you should have your face shield on. But I, but we're taking that, that away, that ability away. And I, I do not like that we're getting further restriction without really good data, Brevard-specific, BPS-specific data to justify it.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Ms. Duskovich?
Just real quick, I, I didn't prep you for this again, Ms. Moore, but I asked the last meeting if we had any data on whole classes that were using the face shields, if there's been any, have we tracked at all since then? If there's been a lot of spread in those classes, those classes where they're using masks? If you, if you have a lot to say, if you just want to say, no, we don't have any data, you could probably say that from there. But if you want to say more. Thank you. And so I think that just speaks to Ms. Campbell's point that we are making decisions to become more strict without any data. We're doing it on feeling and emotion and, obviously, I think one of you mentioned at the request of the teachers' union. I mean, that was the speaker you just, you know, gently mentioned the speaker came up. But it was a leader in the teachers' union that came up and said they're scared and we need to be more strict. And those are feelings and we shouldn't be making decisions on feelings.
Thank you, Ms. Duskovich. Anyone else? Okay. Then, does any board member have anything further they would like to discuss concerning this policy? I think everyone's had, okay. That concludes the rule development portion of the meeting. Before we adjourn, there are a couple of items that members have asked to discuss. And just for our public who joined us today, the board isn't voting on this policy right now. We're voting on it. I think we're, are we approving it at 5:30?
It's on information tonight.
Information tonight.
And then the next board meeting is when the board will make its final vote.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. So hence, no, no, there won't, there won't be a vote or discussion on a vote at this meeting, just so you guys know. All right. There are three items that I have just for basic board discussion. I have the mascot process policy, how to proceed. Mr. Susan, you had brought up concerns and a desire to establish a policy for the mascot. I think Mr. Gibbs was asked to do some research. And I think he has updated everyone on the research that he's done with regard to that.
Yeah, I sent out what I had.
Okay. So bringing it back, Mr. Susan, to see, where do you want to go from here?
We're okay to discuss a, a policy that isn't on the agenda?
You can discuss other topics that are not listed on the agenda, yes.
And we're not actually discussing process.
Just want to make sure before we get into it that.
No, this is a, you can have general discussion. The board's not making any decisions today.
Right. I just want to know where, do you want to bring it, do you want to go to a workshop for us to discuss where you would like to go with it? Do you, what's your desire?
I think, I think bringing forward a workshop where we sit down and talk about all of it from beginning to end. I think that there's, there was some comments that were said back and forth with different pieces to it, that we've renamed mascots in other schools. And there's a difference between renaming a mascot at an elementary school and one that goes on somebody's diploma. So there's a lot of different pieces to what we try to do. And I would like to open that discussion up in a formal workshop where we just, we bring it in and we allow people to bring in their public comments to also do it. So if that helps with direction on how it would. I received your email asking how I would like to proceed. And I think that was about two weeks ago that you sent it out.
Right.
I would like to proceed in a formal workshop.
So the only point of clarification I need on that is in a workshop, we typically do not have public comment unless it's a policy work session. So is it your desire for the board to come together and kind of come to a consensus on direction and then bring it back to our general meeting like we typically would for public comment?
Well, if, if the consensus of the board members that exist are not one that they want to have a policy in place in regards to mascot changing, then it would die there without public comment. So in the event that we have school board members that are willing to take on public comment, I think that it's one of those things that's a hot-button issue and I think we should have public comment on it just as we're making the decision. So if we're in a workshop that doesn't have public comment, three of the five board members say we don't want to proceed, then it doesn't go to a board. And if it does proceed, whatever product we have doesn't have public comment inside of it. I think that this is a really hotly contested issue. And I would like to, if we did go to workshop it, to do it after the election, just because of some of the, the people that are involved. And that's, that would be my request. That way we can have level-headed when we're speaking about it.
So you are okay then to have our traditional workshop format where we will discuss it and then bring it back for discussion at a public board meeting for public comment?
If, if the board members that sit here today are saying that they would like to put together a policy for renaming mascots, if they say no, then that would mean that at that board workshop, they would vote against even it going to the, the actual floor. And if it went, you have no public comment, you have no input, and then we just vote on something and we didn't take it. I would like to have public comment wherever the decision-making is. That's all.
You can't make a decision at any kind of workshop or work session. There's no vote.
Right.
So I mean, if the board doesn't want to proceed, if three of you said, we're not interested, it would just die. It would not move forward. You don't need a vote.
I would say too, the public has opportunity at our regular board meetings to talk about any issue. And they have about any issue that they choose to, that they know is going to come before us. Certainly wouldn't want them to wait if they're concerned about it now. You know, they've got, you know, if they can't come tonight, they've got October 20, uh, 7th. And we have a November one. That would be right after the election. I'm not sure what the after-the-election part has to do with it, but.
The formal governance structure that we have is that we do take, like we do here, public comment during rulemaking, decision-making authority. We also do it when we have a budget. We have a special, does anybody wish to say anything? I think that having an item on the agenda allows individuals to know that it's coming, being noticed, and then come publicly speak regardless of what you feel about it or not. I just feel like if we're going to workshop an issue, that we should have public comment on that issue at that time. Going around that and not doing it, I, I, I think that that would, so whatever that process would be, maybe we have it as an agenda item on the board for discussion and then we go into possibly workshopping it from there. There's a couple of different avenues that we can, to do this. I just think that this is a, something that is definitely hot enough to discuss.
All right. I will work with Mr. Gibbs on that.
I mean, does, how about we, how about I just say that we bring it up as an item on the school board discussion for one of our board agendas, like a normal night? And then anybody wishes to come speak on it can, permissive on what is said and what the board direction is from that meeting, we can then say that we want to go back and have a policy written, or we can continue with the same thing. That's fair. That's, that puts it on the agenda. People know that it's there and then we can discuss it. If we go the other direction and then we have people coming, we just don't have public comment. Does that make sense, Mr. Gibbs?
Yeah, I understand. You can.
Is that something that the board chair would entertain?
Yeah, that's fine. I'll, I'll work with Mr. Gibbs to get it worked out for some time after November.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I just say that if you want to see some public comment, go to Edgewood's site right now. Edgewood has a lot. And let's not kid ourselves. This is why this is coming up. It's not because somebody else changed it. It's because Edgewood wants to change their mascot.
Absolutely.
So I feel that that school is being singled out when any other school could change their mascot. It wasn't a big deal. So I encourage you to look on their website to see both sides because there is a lot of information from both sides. It's a very passionate, as you can see from me, very passionate subject right now. And I really appreciate the Native American Indian Congress for weighing in also. So I encourage you to look there if you haven't yet. Mr. Susan?
I, I absolutely have. And I, I do want to say that the school is not being singled out. They chose to be singled out, single the fact that they chose to take a hot-button issue like this in the middle of an election where they, in the process of doing something like this, they chose to take that energy on. And that, that portion of what is happening is what they chose to do. So I don't think people are, they are upset about the process, about what's happening there, if they are or they're in positive or negative. about what's happening there, if they are, or they're in positive or negative. A lot of it is being fueled, not only from their feelings internally, but also the political climate that we have. And one of the issues that I was trying to bring forward was that this is coming at a time when we are dealing with elements that are outside of our normal opinions and individuals in our school system. And that was where I was asking if we could push it until after the election so that the discussions could not be curtailed into having our staff being hit with what other people's opinions are about any elected officials and how they feel and everything else. That was, that was the purpose.
I don't, I just want to clarify. I am very clear that the school did not do this on purpose during an election year. This has come up years before, and there was more momentum to do it now, but I really do not want to say that our school, our principals said, oh, let's do it because it's election year. I'm a positive she did not do that.
I don't think she did it at all that way. I just think that the timing is unfortunate, and I wish that we could do it past the election. That's all. And I don't think that she in any way did it on purpose because of that. I think that it's just unfortunate that it's now. That's all.
All right. So the other item, I have two additional items on here for board discussion. One, Mr. Susan, you have requested that we have discussion around the athletic supplement issue, and my understanding is that perhaps that it was a misunderstanding to begin with? Is that correct?
So, so I think Dr. Thede had sent out an email to, one of the issues that we had was that our athletic supplements, there was a, if you guys saw it in the LTD meeting, it's a, something went out, and it said inside there that the supplements could be prorated, okay? And what happened is, is I received multiple phone calls, multiple emails last night in regards to it. So I sent out an email to everybody today as a forward shot to try to put it on the agenda to talk about it, to make sure that it's not something that we were moving forward on. And I had extreme concern if we did. So Dr. Thede came back and said, it was not the intent of the school district to do that, and I was going to ask Dr. Mullins to reinforce it. And it's also been emailed to each one of our principals and everybody else, so that every one of our teachers, our, our coaches do not think that because their season is half of what it is, that they would be prorated and not pay their supplement, right? Dr. Mullins, can we, can you just tell them that so that they, they feel better?
So for the board and the viewing public, we send out a memo to, through the leadership team packet every year about this time to provide clarification of our supplement, supplement schedule. And it does state in the memo that there is a prorated for a partial season that is applicable when a coach comes on part, partway into a season or may quit before the season is over, because if they do not remain employed for the season, they would not receive, be eligible for the full supplement. That clause or that statement in the memo is published every year for the last several years to provide that clarification. It is suspected that coaches misinterpreted that statement that has been in the memo for years to reflect the fact that our football season could be perceived to be seven tenths as long as it normally is, because this year, this season, they have seven regular season games as opposed to their normal 10 or 11, until any postseason qualifications. That has never been the intent of the memo. I would suggest we have past practice that would indicate that our coaches have been compensated for a season that was cut short due to COVID-related reasons. Most recently, last spring, when we had our spring athletics cut short because we closed school. Athletes could not compete, and those coaches were compensated for the full season supplement. So I agree, there was a misunderstanding, and we have clarified it. There was, there was never a misinterpret, there was never a recommunication on Bavar, on part of Bavar Public Schools to prompt a misunderstanding. I would suggest coaches made an incorrect assumption, that language that has always existed in a memo applied to something it never did. So we have clarified that with our principals, and they will, and our athletic directors, and they will make sure that that gets extended to our coaches. But it is not the district's intent to, now the word left me, prorate, prorate a athletic supplement that may be the result of a shortened season due to COVID-related issues.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins, for doing that. I really appreciate that.
So we good on that, Mr. Susan?
Yep.
Okay. The last discussion item that I have is in regards to our minutes from our board check-in. Ms. Escobar sent some minutes out, asking us just to review and make sure that she had captured the, the accurate spirit of the board, and there were a couple of requests for revision. Ms. Campbell had a minor revision, I think, on the next-to-last bullet on legislative platform. Does anyone have any questions or concerns on that revision? Okay. Under board budget review, there was, I think, some back-and-forth discussion about this, and I felt like it was better just to bring it for us to discuss. So when we were in that meeting, we had discussed that if board members did not spend, for example, their travel allocation a specific way, that they would have the flexibility to utilize those dollars differently for, for a different cause. And I think Mr. Susan submitted a revision or addition on that, which, do you guys all have the policy in front of you? Or the, I'm sorry, the minutes in front of you?
Yeah.
Okay. So Mr. Susan's revision was, board members agreed that if a member wants to spend their allocation a specific way, all they have to do is notify accounting to change the funding stream to the appropriate designation.
Or Ms. Escobar, because she knows the accounting streams, however.
So I will tell you my recollection of our discussion during that, and, and I think it's important for a couple of reasons, was that a board member who wishes to change their allocation should make a request for the superintendent to direct staff to do so. I don't know if that's what the rest of you recall, or if, if you feel like that is important. I will share with you that I think it's important just to not get in the habit of board members directing staff members to take action. I think that the superintendent should be directing his staff to take action. And so for us to circumvent the superintendent and go directly to accounting and tell them to move something, no concerns with this board, but, you know, a board in the future where there were potential trust issues or something like that, and now you have someone who might be in accounting and not feel like they can stand up to a board member, I just, I think it's bad practice. And I, I think it's important for us to go through the superintendent on addressing those issues.
So it.
You could just take out the accounting and put the superintendent?
Yeah, but I'm asking, is that giving the superintendent the opportunity to say no to the request, or is that just the proper process?
I would suggest potentially both. I mean, if you go to the superintendent and you say, superintendent, I want you to move my $500 that I had allocated for travel into an account that I'm going to use, and I'm not saying you would do this. I'm just, I'm just saying potential, right? If you go to the superintendent and say, I want you to move those dollars into account that I'm going to use to take three of our vendors out to dinner so I can get a better price on the contract, the superintendent needs to be able to tell you no for the, for the betterment of the district.
I, I don't, I don't think that there's, that happens over across the street at the county commissioners. I don't think that happens anywhere in any other elected official where the people have to ask the permission of the city manager or the city, the person in order to do it. I think that we are elected by our people. We're allocated a certain specific amount of money. I think we could go through the superintendent and say, hey, this is what's happening. But I mean, you know, we're talking about, what if I decide that I want to send out the letters, and then all of a sudden, somebody says, no, you don't get to send out the letters? Or what happens if I say I want to set up an email and get to my constituents? Well, we already have one of those. You don't need it. Well, what happens if I want to go? I mean, it just, there's so much, and then it becomes back to the board. We're elected by our people, and I feel strongly that if we misinterpret our spend, that is, I don't really mind posting it on, on the website, how much or what we spend our money on. I just, I truly believe that going through the superintendent may be the proper process, but putting a check in place to where he can say no to the allocation that we have based upon something, I would say. I mean, maybe you put Paul Gibbs in there to say, if this follows an illegal action, just like you were saying, then that's great. But I mean, you know, I just think that when you, being the fact of where we are now, you're 100% right, but going forward, you may have a superintendent that doesn't get along with a board member, is just going to say, no, I'm not going to do that. And that, that works both ways. So I think that if you wanted to put a caveat in that says, review legal to make sure that it's nothing that, that breaks statute, you know, I think that's great, and then go through the superintendent. That's fair. We're not talking about anything like crazy like that, expense accounts and buying stuff. It's more about, like, a couple of years ago, I traveled over to Johnson Space Center and had an opportunity to bring the HUNCH program here. That was something that came up at the last minute. It was allowed. It was travel. It was going. But I think same things like that may come up, and we don't want to have a situation where, you know, board members or superintendent go against it just because of personal feelings, rather than legal. So that's what I was thinking. I don't know how you feel.
I think that's a great solution, Mr. Susan, and I absolutely understand your intent. I'm not trying to.
No, 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 no. I, that's what I love about this is, you know, there's, everything's there. I'm, I'm all about it. I just, I want to send some darn letters out. That's where all this started.
So to the, so those, what you just said can be reflected in the minutes of today's meeting, but we do probably need to correct the minutes from the last meeting, because I don't think we specifically agreed, and this, these minutes say that the board members agreed on this specifically. I don't remember actually that coming up about going to accounting. So what would be a good way for us to?
Pam is trying to get our attention.
These are notes. These are not minutes. You have not approved these. These are only notes.
Okay.
So do we, do you need us to make any changes to?
I need to know what you want it to, how you want it to be reflected.
Okay.
And Pam, was there another question with regard to? So today's minutes, as Ms. Campbell stated, will reflect the, the additional details. So we just need to capture what was discussed at that meeting. And I, I believe at that meeting, what we discussed was board members could utilize their allocations differently after speaking to the superintendent. Does that?
Do you want me to find exactly what I sent out?
I really like the fact that we're doing this. This is really cool.
Good. Waiting on Pam to tell us what the, what she had in there before the revision, I think.
Come back to it.
This is what I originally sent to you guys as the notes, as I wrote them down.
Okay.
Board members agreed that if a member wants to spend their allocation a specific way, all they have to do is notify accounting to change the funding stream to the appropriate designation.
No, that's.
No, that's the revision.
I'm sorry. That's, I, it was one before this. I apologize.
Board members, is your recollection that the discussion was that board members could utilize their allocations in different ways as long as it was brought to the, the, a request brought to the superintendent to change funding strings? Or do you recall something different from the conversation?
Doesn't matter. Okay. Put in what we just said. We're good to go.
I know we talked about it, but I don't remember specifically if it's the superintendent or accounting. I just don't remember that part.
I think we agreed, we agreed to allow flexibility.
Right.
In.
For the use of funds.
In the use of funds.
That, that's what we, that's what we agreed to, and then I think you said something like, all we have to do is change the accounting stream, and we all said, okay, meeting done.
Yeah. I was just giving the example of how.
Yeah.
Sorry. I was giving the example of how everybody else does it in every cost center. They just say, okay, I'm not going to spend $10,000 on our furniture. I'm going to move it into travel. You know what I mean? Like that kind of stuff. Sorry to use those two. Something different.
But I think that's how it got translated into here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So are you guys okay if the notes reflect that board members agreed to provide flexi, flexibility for members to use their allocations differently? And then our discussion from today will reflect that it needs to go through the superintendent and legal?
Absolutely.
Is that good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Pam, do you have that?
Okay.
All right.
And you can't say no unless it's illegal, Gibbs, because you say no all the time.
There was, the one bullet under miscellaneous with regard to the superintendent contracts, I did, that wasn't technically part of our discussion, so I told Pam I didn't, I wasn't sure that it needed to be in there. If you guys feel like it needs to be in there, we can certainly leave it in there.
Which one was that?
Under miscellaneous.
Oh, yeah, I think I had sent her a note, too, because that wasn't, I.
It was kind of a sideline.
It wasn't correct. That we were leaving it as it is currently. We were leaving it as the proposed, the proposal was, which I think Pam had a copy of at the time, so.
Yeah. So do you want, I'm, there was.
We can just take it out.
Just take it out? You go, okay. And then under hot button issues, Mr. Susan had some changes to the second bullet with regard to controversial clothing. Are you guys okay with the edit?
Yes.
I'm okay with it.
Yep.
Everybody else good with it?
Yeah.
And then the next bullet, Mr. Susan added his advocacy to allow competition for our bands. You guys good with that?
Yeah, we're good with that.
Okay. So Pam, I think we're good there?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Dr. Mullins, I, I think, board members, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that I heard agreement on at least a consultation with our medical experts on mitigation strategy. Considerations. How about that?
That's the medical advisory group that we brought together about four or five weeks ago. Does the board have a preference to an in-person workshop, work session like we held last time, or to have them like a conference call type of discussion? There were quite a few. It may get difficult to manage a conference call situation. We could try and arrange for a, I do want to be respectful of their professional time. Can't imagine how busy their lives are. We could seek to set up a Zoom or Teams, whatever Mr. Cheatham recommends for the board, or would you prefer an in-person?
I wonder even if we could submit our questions and have them reply in writing, and then if we have questions on their responses, maybe we can convene, just to be respectful of their time?
Okay.
Does that, does that work for you guys?
Yeah. And I, even though it is difficult sometimes to do a virtual meeting with that many people, they are coming from the extremes of our county, and I sure would hate to add, in addition to the meeting, the travel time, which doubles it sometimes for them. So.
Right.
I'm, I'm okay with virtual at the very most, but I certainly would be happy to have it, like a survey or, like, similar to what we did last time, that we submitted questions. Maybe we can be a little, we can, this time around, be more, have objective questions, I guess, or whatever, for them to help us with.
Yeah, and then we'll just get their responses that way. So.
Do you want to buy?
Yeah, that's what I was looking at. Today is October 6th. Is a week enough time for you all to submit your questions?
Yeah.
And who, do you want them submitted to?
If you would submit them to Pam, she'll collect them, eliminate any duplications, put them in order, if you would, Pam, and then we'll get them distributed to the medical advisory. I'd like to give them at least a week to reply, maybe 10 days, if the board is, if that's acceptable.
Yeah. Okay. Everybody good with that? Pam?
So they, I should receive the questions by a week from today?
Yes.
Would you send us something to remind us, Pam?
I would.
Also, I, it's pretty tedious to track everything that I had been tracking every day, and as you guys have seen, I, there were some days that I let lapse. So if, if there's something specific, I can go back probably and find the deaths per day. specific, I can go back probably and find the deaths per day, so we can keep that. Obviously, we have a, we have a total count, but that doesn't show a trend. Is there anything else? Are we, are we caring about following the other counties' numbers for relative? I want to track what we want to track, but I don't want to waste my time on stuff that we don't, that's not relevant. So I can, I'm trying to put it all in one place. And the averages aren't something that you can find online necessarily.
Right.
You know, if we weren't so close to the borders, like, so many people go to Orlando and back and forth, and...
Okay, so maybe just, instead of like Hillsborough and Miami-Dade, maybe just our surrounding counties?
Absolutely.
Okay?
That's only my opinion, but...
I like having one big one to compare it to, just, just to...
Is Orange big enough?
Orange is pretty big.
Yeah, I don't know. I've always, like, for some reason, I like to look at Miami. I guess I feel better about us when I look at the worst-case scenario.
Well, and I had included Hillsborough at the time, because they were in the news as about to potentially defy the Department of Education's orders, and I, you know, it was important to see how we compared to them. But yeah, I mean, they're on their side of the state. Miami-Dade's been a completely different case the whole entire time, but I think we can get large counties and small counties if we just go around us. You good with that? I'll leave Miami-Dade in there just for you.
Just for like six more weeks.
Can we, anything else? Any other, the hospital numbers are on ACHA. It's a completely different website, but I am continuing to see, as hopefully you are, in the news, that our hospitals are, they have, they're at lower capacity, not at lower capacity. They are less full than they normally are, not in a pandemic, because they're artificially pushing that. And of course, people, and I will be like every public official who's said this, "If you need to go to the hospital, please go to the hospital," but, you know, hopefully that fear of being in the hospital is not keeping people away from the medical treatment they truly need. But that has kept things down as well.
Yeah. I, I don't know that it helps you at all, because I think they're numbers that everyone wants to look at, but I have real concerns about the validity of percent positivity, or even number of cases. Like, they just, they seem to be all over the place. So I think 14-day trend levels that some, but I just, it's almost, if you look at the graph, it's almost like they're inverse.
Right, right, because when they have a very small number of people test, a lot of times, the positivity rate will be higher, which I take as, you know, only the people who actually had symptoms or whatever went and got tested, so of course, their percentage is going to be higher. Back in June, late June through July, everybody, you know, I had coughed, "Oh, my gosh, let's go get tested," and there were tons of people getting tested. And there was also higher, there was also a lot more cases too. So it's, I think it's important to follow all of them. But I, like I said, I will track that. I've been trying to track the pediatrics, but that's another thing that you, they only, like, it's just the one day, and if I miss a day, I missed it. So I'll see, I'm going to also see if I can call Maria Stahl and see if she can, if there's a way to go download. There may be some secret back way to go see former day's reports. I'm like, "I missed this day. Can I, can I find it?" Or I'll just start downloading them, because I want to, you know, to be consistent.
Yeah. Thank you so much for all your work on that, Ms. Campbell.
You're welcome.
It's been very helpful. All right. Anyone else? Dr. Mullins, anything else?
Yes, if I may, just remind the board that Mr. Brune provided you a copy of the draft legislative priorities summary that was discussed at the check-in, and it is on the agenda this evening during staff reports to allow the board to talk, to have further discussion about it. With Mr. Brune, he'll be available for the board to have further discussion. But if you would take a few minutes to review that, if you have any suggestions or additional items that could be added, certainly you can connect with Mr. Brune between now and the board meeting, or we'll have collective board opportunity to discuss it during the board meeting this evening. Staff reports toward the end of the, the meeting.
Thank you. Board members, one last time, anything else? Dr. Mullins, you good? There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.